We need to add a garbage can to our budget here for...
Yeah, we have long-winded.
Now we have a new CEO, we can get that happening, eh?
It's low on the priorities.
Hold on a second. It's an interim CEO, don't push him.
We're not going to spend anything unnecessarily.
Yeah, true.
Other mics on?
Are you on the radio for a podcast?
What's that?
Are you on the radio for a podcast?
I think so.
Alright, it's 5 o'clock, so we're going to call a meeting to order. Thank you, welcome to our view and we'd like to recognize Poi Macarthy for Channel 32 and Rani Sabon and Tinkie were today for Temple Star reporting. Thank you so much for doing that service for us all and we loved... Delegation, we have Sandra Akko with her friend and we have Dr. Griffith. We will have later on Mr. Walsh that will come and we have Randy of also will do presentation and we have also a known card from the town that has worked on the same portfolio and we have a bylaw officer hidden behind the pulpit. Welcome to all of you. We will start the meeting by having a prayer by Counselor Barnes.
Thank you. Our Father returned heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together in council and grateful for the opportunity we have to serve our community and our citizens. We're thankful for the citizenry and for all that they do to support us and to help us to understand their needs too and we pray that they'll bless us as a community that we will be able to continue to have the wonderful place that we have to live and that we might be able to consider the bylaws that we have before us and that we'll be able to have the spirit of discernment and how to best put these bylaws together that will be for the betterment for our community. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve and ask thy Spirit to guide us in our deliberations this evening in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
And I'd like to recognize today our new interim CEO and Jeff Shaw, mayor, is now moving towards green of pasture maybe. But welcome to you Jeff and you have our support in your position. Thank you so much for having accepted it. We need to adopt the agenda.
Any additions?
Yes, any addition. I will suggest that we have one addition on the confidential item is regarding CEO position update on the 12C. At that point, we will ask Jeff to not be part of all update. Motion?
To move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Moved by Counselor Pivoy to adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor? Thank you. Adoptions of meeting of the regular town council meeting of January 13, 2015?
Make a motion to adopt the minutes of January 13, 2015.
Thank you. Any question regarding those minutes before we vote? No, seeing none. All in favor? Thank you Counselor Pivoy for your motion. Okay, we a little bit ahead of schedule but we do have one delegation and we could get Sandra Akko to come since you're here and you could do your presentation. Thank you. Now that presentation is in regard of bylaw 1625, called a dog bylaw. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to attend and thank you for taking a deep interest in the concerns of the population when it comes to some of these issues. You've received a copy of my email and so you know what my concerns are and I would much rather find out your opinions of where we're going with this than for me to reiterate what I've already sent you.
Okay, so Sandra, if we could, just for the publics that are watching as well, those deliberation, your concern were essentially regarding the fines and the amount of the fines regarding the first section of the bylaw. And you remember that the first offense was a warning and the second was $200. And in fact, what you are really coming to counsel for is to say $200 in your opinion is too much money considering that many dog owners are senior citizens and might not have that type of money. Is that, am I understanding you?
It's a catalyst for that. It made me very concerned about how forceful these regulations will be acted upon. You know, I realize there's been problems in the community with animals. I understand that. But I've also seen because of that, those problems, overreaction with people. They're frightened before, without even knowing they, you know, they have a reason to be frightened. So there's a lot of stuff going on like that out there with our dogs, okay? And so my concern is what do you really constitute? An annoyance? A nuisance? Certainly dangerous, that's another matter altogether. But these things, there's a difference between people who are responsible for their pets and who are want to do the best to follow all the rules and regulations, okay? But there's also a group of the ones that you're having problems with are people who don't care what their dogs do and they never run, they're never supervised, you know? And so those of us that try hard to are under the same situation of those that don't give a whoo what their dogs attend to when they're away. The other thing is the fact that now we have to have a dog leash in every place, no matter where we go, then that means we have no place to exercise our dogs. There's nothing provided, we can't do anything at the park. I take my way out in the country down a dirt road so she can run a bit. And if, part of my thought too was that if we had a place to exercise our dogs, they would be less of a nuisance in the first place because that energy is taken care of. So we're compounding the problems by making people not allow their dog anywhere, pose them in, and then you have agitated dogs, then you have a situation. Not to mention the fact that these kind of fines will bring up a lot of emotion in all the people that's involved, you know? And I really don't know that heavy fines is going to change anything because the people who don't care about the dogs, they don't plan on paying the fines anyway. So those are my main concerns.
Okay, so there are some questions that a council would like to address. Some of the issues that you are speaking about would be addressed through the other delegation. When you talk about definitions, that is something that we have improved upon and that's your second delegation. And you may want to stay there to try to hear a little bit what has been changed in our bylaw. So then you might be of interest. The other element that you're talking about is the need for exercising for dogs, maybe a place to investigate, can we do that? Is that wise? Is it worthwhile doing? And the other one is fees regarding second time offense.
Right.
Okay, and so all that is something that we understand. Are your concern? Council will now have a chance to ask questions and then later on we will discuss all that as council at the table, okay? Counselor Pivoy was, Counselor, no, sorry, Counselor Benry. Sorry, yeah. The fellow in yellow.
Mrs. Akko, I have...
Thank you so much.
I have read your email and I agree with you. There is some concerns here. But as a council, we have to develop policy and policy has to be followed. But at the same token, we feel as a council that we've hired a bylaw enforcement officer who is very, very adept to the community and we leave it up to his discretion and we have never had any problems with his discretion on how he's going to tackle a problem. And you have some very, very valid points here. I would like to see an exercise area, you know, for a dog exercise area. But as with everything, that can also be misdirected and misguided and misused. So we've got to cover all the points there. The city of Lethbridge is dealing with that problem right now. And, but like I said, with the hiring of our bylaw officer, I think he has a lot of discretion and he uses it, you know, to his fullest.
Alright. I kind of would agree with Counselor Benry that a bylaw officer is not there to always apply the law as to the letter of the law, at the same time as to the spirit of the law. So that is where the discretion comes into.
Sandra, I took time over the Christmas holidays to consider these things, long before I saw your letter. And I've had some concerns myself because, you know, I love dogs and I've had dogs. I don't have a dog right now. But talking with other people, one of the concerns I had with the bylaw is that we don't have an alternative. And I think until we have an alternative, I don't think it's fair to go forward with this unless we do have much discretion. I think that we need to have a dog run. Most major cities have one and regardless if they have problems or not, they have a space. They have a spot that they can allow dogs to run. And I think, especially larger dogs, they need to have a place that they can run. And I think we need a fenced off area somewhere. I don't know where it's going to be. But I think we need to consider looking at a place so that maybe the council creates backyard. But I know that we have a lot of concern out there and I'm concerned along with you because I know a lot of my friends that have dogs and I think one of the problems that larger dogs have when they're confined, they don't get that exercise and they do get a little frustrated, you know? They're somewhat human. We get frustrated too when we don't have, you know, some mental exercise. So I think that we as a council need to look at that. Maybe we need to get administration to look at where possibly we get designated a spot that could be fenced off big enough for this. But I want you to know that I feel that very strongly and would be supportive of something like that. So that we can properly allow for both sides of the bylaw. Okay?
I think what we need to do is make sure that we have questions for Mrs.
The more I read it over, it seems to me that it's an anti-dog bylaw. An anti-dog bylaw. I think we're just picking on the dogs.
You mean the bylaw as you're reading it is...
It picks on dogs. It's making them to comfort. I have a fenced-in yard and my dog likes to go outside and spend most of his day outside. But there's three cats in the neighborhood that know that if they come along the fence, he's going to bark at them and chase them. And so I think we should have equal rights for cats too and have the same...
They take it.
You know, let's treat them more freely. I think to pick it on the dogs is not fair. And reading over the bylaw, I won't get another dog. I can't afford to have one.
That's my, where I'm coming from, with these seniors that are all live alone, need a companion. And it means we won't be able to have one because we'll worry about this constantly because we make mistakes. The dogs get away from us, they get outside. There's all these little things that happen that you just can't rigid off anything.
Well, like in our area, when my dog barks, all our neighbors know that there's something happening that maybe shouldn't be. So he's a guarded dog as well, but he's going to get penalized. I now have a bark collar which gives him a shock every time he barks. Well, that's not fair.
Alright, so we do have concerns around the table which mean that regarding that dog bylaw, we as council may need more time to review this dog bylaw and address some of those concerns later on. Thank you. Counselor Barnes, do you want to...
Just the one thing that I've heard come up here tonight quite a bit and around the community quite a bit. I think there's a little bit maybe of a misunderstanding of what some of the changes are with this bylaw. We are not new in saying that dogs must be on a leash. That's actually been the bylaw for some time. And there are a lot of people in the community that weren't aware of that. But that's not a new change to this bylaw and I think it's important to note that. I'm interested in our discussions which will take place a little bit later because I think we need to maybe review the purpose of coming up with this was.
Yes.
And maybe that will help clear up some of that confusion.
Good point. If we don't have any more comments or suggestions? Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And we see that Mr. Walsh is there and you may want to stay and listen to his presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think I failed to recognize Dr. Griffith, so, so, so sorry. What happened? I know that you might do a co-presentation now for one. Thank you. And this is in regard also of the dog bylaw?
Yes.
Alright.
I'm just going to read from my notes here and I'm just kind of summarize my concerns. Honorable Mayor and Councilors, concerning the highest bylaw changes to the dog bylaw, I hope I can offer some suggestions from the perspective of at least one of the 200-plus responsible dog owners in Cardston. Firstly, I'd like to reiterate that I do appreciate the legitimate concerns of our town bylaw officer and some town residents with regards to the need to update this bylaw and in doing so hopefully solve some of the issues of stray and unattended dogs. My concerns can be summed up into three main points. One, the lack of off-leash options for the exercising of dogs. Two, the language and structure of the proposed bylaw. And three, the fine schedule, Schedule A. I've asked Dr. Griffith, Todd Griffith, to our local bed to come and share some of his experiences and professional knowledge on the issue of the off-leash options and his thoughts on that. So I'm just going to hand over to him and then I can continue on with a few of my other points.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve mentioned, he called me earlier and there was an online forum and they were talking about some of the issues with the bylaw. And I had mentioned that I had lived in several areas, both in Canada and the US, with different exercise options for dogs. And he just asked if I could touch on just a couple of points on how they might pertain to a bylaw or something that we could have that would be workable in our community here in Cardston. So I just wanted to hit on a couple of key points and then if there's any questions, I can certainly answer those quickly. I certainly agree that active, healthy exercise options for dogs make them better dogs. And certain breeds certainly are more prone to needing that, certain breed types and also certain sizes. But it isn't limited to this dog needs exercise, that one doesn't. There just are a lot of dogs that exercise makes them better. And certainly there's the option to exercise on leash and then off-leash. Someone who is a very active and physically capable person has a lot more on-leash exercise options. For example, I run with my dog or I roll of blood with my dog. I have the ability to do that. Where some perhaps more senior citizens that have mentioned they don't have the physical ability to do that, they are limited in their abilities to exercise dogs with an on-leash option. When we're talking about off-leash options, there's essentially two that you can look at in a community. One of them would be a designated off-leash area that is in an existing area of some other use. For example, a park or a walkway or some type of public community area that just designates an on-leash. And it can even be just a specific area. And I've also lived in areas where they do a specific time in that area. And it's posted, it's very clear. And that's something that has worked well in some communities that I have been in. And so you essentially have the on/off-leash just designated area. And then there's also the option of what we call a dog park. And that's an actual fenced area or multiple fenced areas that you can have dogs on a free exercise opportunity. Both of those options can be successful. Both of them have some inherent risks associated with them from a health standpoint, from a contagious disease standpoint, but also from a health standpoint of big dog eats little dog or big dog attacks person, et cetera, et cetera. These can be done appropriately, but they need to have certain ideas and certain rules and certain understandings in place to make them work. I'm happy to share some of my experiences in different areas of things that have worked. I can just tell you, they can work. But they do need to have certain risk assessment things and some parameters set ahead of time to make sure that they do work. And they can be very successful in having an opportunity for people who are responsible dog owners to have some off-leash exercise opportunities. So if that works on another time, I'd happy to do that. I don't have a lot of time this evening. But if there's any really quick questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But otherwise, that's essentially what I have come to say about this particular part of the bylaw.
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you so much for coming to council to offer some new ideas regarding the issues that we have with the bylaw. And thank you for being there to offer solutions.
You're welcome.
This is probably the best thing that can happen today from all of the presenter, Mr. Walsh included and Mrs. Akko. It's very refreshing for council to have citizens come and show their interest in what we're doing.
Well, I have to give credit to Steve because he called me and said, "There's a meeting tonight. Could you please come and present?" And I didn't even know what he was presenting. He just said, "Could you please come and share some of your thoughts on this particular thing?" Certainly, I think it's important for council to have a good educated idea and also know that there's a resource if you would like to to make use of that.
Thank you very much for offering some of your time. Appreciate that. Counselor Barnes?
I like the idea of specific times. Because I look at, and one of the biggest concerns that I have is big dog versus medium, small dogs. And, you know, little dogs are annoyance to big dogs. That's all there is to it, right? They definitely are. And it's just like, you know, my little brother is always annoying me. Sometimes he still is. But I think that it's really difficult to mix in an off-leash area big dogs and smaller dogs at the same time. And so, you know, I think the timing thing might be a really good issue so that people are well aware that there are particular times that the large dogs are allowed there and other particular times when the small, medium dogs are allowed in that off-leash area. And I think that that would work.
There are many ways that can work successfully. The most important thing is that people know when the times are that they can make an educated decision on, this is the appropriate time for myself and my dog to be in this area. However, that may, whether it may be an off-leash area or a dog park specifically.
Thank you very much. And we could call on your expertise?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. So maybe administration will make contact with you, Dr. Griffith. Thank you so much.
I kind of detailed in my original interview to council some of my thoughts on that and some of the research that I've done from the ASPCA with regards to the advantages and, you know, disadvantages of either a dog park option or an off-leash option. My personal preference as a large dog owner, and I concur with everything that's been said about that, is an off-leash option times posted and things like that. Because I know, having owned large dogs all my life, that Counselor Barnes is totally accurate with his comment that small dogs are an irritation to large dogs. And it doesn't matter how disciplined and well-behaved your dog is, there's a breaking point. And so, you know, certainly with the fee structure in mind, as a dog owner of a large dog, I actually wouldn't make use of a dog park because there's just too much risk associated with that for me financially. I just, in recapping, just to summarize on that subject, I believe it's a reasonable request that dog owners be allocated equal opportunity to make use of town facilities as say a jogger or a walker. I don't think that, you know, they should be favored to the detriment of a dog owner. That's my personal feeling on that. I'd like to move on just to my second point, which is the language and structure of the proposed bylaw. Again, I recognize the need for the changes. Concerning the language and structure of the proposed bylaws, my main concerns with the proposed documents as it stands is that it appears to be unclear in many of its definitions. And I kind of went through that in my letter point by point. So I'm not going to go into any of that.
And this is something, Mr. Walsh, that we want to thank you greatly because those are amendments that we made into the body of the bylaw. And administration might want to speak about that or lawyers, nobody.
Thank you. I think it's fair to say that I believe that it's important to not only be clear in the intent of the law but also to ensure that the rights and freedoms of responsible dog owners are not unintentionally undermined now or in the future interpretation of the bylaw. You know, I've heard it said a few times that, you know, we intend to enforce it in this way. But I think for me as a dog owner, I would feel happier knowing that the bylaw is clear and the enforcement of that bylaw is cannot be misinterpreted down the line. I think, I don't have any issues with that interpretation right now, but what happens in 10 years' time? That could become a problem. And for me as a dog owner, and I intend to own dogs into the future, as it stands right now with the fee structure which I'll talk on in a second, it really is a detrimental bylaw. I probably would not get another dog once my dog passes on because I couldn't afford to. You know, I have little kids and it doesn't matter how well you look after that dog and how well your yard is fenced. At some point, somebody's going to leave a door or a gate open and that dog will get out. And I don't know about you guys, but I can't afford a $10,000 fine or whatever the fine is, you know, it's high. It's very high. Concerning the fee structure, I believe that increases ranging from 100% to 10 times that number are more than a little excessive to say the least. It occurs to me that it appears that these fines are intended to persuade all but the wealthiest dog owners from paying them. I could not afford them, definitely. Failure to pay the fine then by default makes the dog the property of the town which then has the option to euthanase the animal. It appears that this fine structure is, to put it bluntly, a fast track to euthanasia. And personally, I believe that that's morally wrong. I think it gives undue authority to the town to kill dogs that fall foul of the law. I have proposed a fine structure which, while still high, I still feel that the structure that I've proposed was high. I feel it will achieve the same ends that this bylaw is intended to achieve while preserving some of the rights of dog owners. In conclusion, it's my earnest hope that the town will consider the rights and wishes of the 200-plus dog owners of the town and come to a fair and equitable compromise on the proposed bylaw changes and the use of town facilities for the benefits of all its citizens. I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much for your input. It's very important to have divergent ideas on matters because that allows us to make better decisions. So thank you so much. We will look into all what you have brought forward and see how we can incorporate some, maybe not all, but find a proper compromise that will in one way protect people in the town from being harmed by the... the town from being harmed by dogs or by any kind of wildlife animal. But here we're talking about dogs in particular and the owners of the dog who are also citizens and taxpayer.
Thank you. I think that's what we're looking for, really.
Okay. Counselor Barnes?
I want to correct a question to our bylaw officer, Mr. Stewart, in regards to dogs that have been euthanized. Has there been very, very many animals euthanized in our communities under your watch?
Because of?
Because of aggressive or whatever? I just want to know what kind of a percentage or does it happen very often?
In position as the bylaw officer, there are three dogs that have been euthanized.
In how many years?
Five, six years. One had parvocereptin that the vet couldn't fix it. The other one, the owner wanted the dog put down because he didn't want it to be adopted out to anybody else. And the other one had distemper, which is not curable, and had been put down. Those are the only three dogs that have been put down.
So under the definitions of the bylaw proposed, there really hasn't been any of that type of situation or problem. So I'm thinking maybe, you know, there's, I see with the fines, I see where you're coming from, Steve. And like I said, I had larger dogs too. And maybe it's a perception thing out there too. You know, we get a little, you know, knee-jerk reaction to the fines and stuff like that. But I think that Mr. Stewart has used great discretion in his time as our bylaw officer. And we haven't had this issue, it hasn't been, there hasn't been a lot of threats out there that's happening.
I think the concern for me is that it's open to interpretation.
Yep.
So obviously, you know, when Lloyd moves on and somebody else comes in, they may have a different perspective on that. And this bylaw, the proposed changes, would allow them to willy-nilly euthanize dogs.
Yeah.
Yes and no. Yes, according to the letter. No, according to that person being an employee of the town and receiving direction for council. Okay. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So later on, we will deal with that bylaw and we at council will maybe take more time before we even pass a motion to approve that bylaw.
I'm just finding one thing there. Ryan, are you okay time-wise?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Whatever you need to do. I would just throw it out there while you have your delegates here. Did you want to discuss it now or do you want to wait till after, Ryan?
Okay. Jeff, I know that you and Lloyd have looked at this bylaw and have made changes into the definition. Would you like maybe to address those points for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
So council, while this wasn't a public hearing per se, the mayor and I were talking about, because we've got some interest from the citizens, normally in a public hearing, I would get up and explain the bylaw and talk about changes and this isn't that, but I'd like to do that. And I too would thank Steve for his feedback. There's a couple of things you'll see that were changed. I just want to make sure that are clear prior to your discussion on whether now or later. The definitions under aggressive dog were, you can see, expanded considerably. So what was one, just one definition now is six points under the definition, largely from Mr. Walsh's recommendations. There's a lot of good reason to expand on that, to take the subjectivity out of the definition. So that was important and Lloyd and I agreed on that. The next thing that you would notice, under the appeal process, so it's section six, there was concern, and US Council had mentioned this actually in the previous meeting, so we amended that appeal process. So we couldn't euthanize any animal without giving the owner the opportunity to appeal to council, to put that safeguard in there because that was a concern. And so US Council addressed that, we've made that. The other thing I wanted to point out, because this came a lot from Mr. Walsh's comments, is section 24, under threatening behavior, minor injury, severe injury, things like that, there was some concern, and Mr. Walsh, correct me if I'm misinterpreting, there was some concern that some people rightfully have dogs on their property and feel that, you know, they're there for protection and they should act maybe aggressively towards an unauthorized person or an intruder, that that would in fact be appropriate. And so what was changed that you will see through the bylaws is that if the dog exhibits threatening behavior towards an unauthorized person, someone who you didn't consent to be on your property, so it changed the context of the behavior. So if it was towards someone who is unauthorized to be on your property, now, there's some subtleties within that we'll need to discuss. Is the meter reader authorized? You know, is the newspaper boy authorized? There's some things we're going to have to work through. But the intent is, we made the change through those different sections to say that you're not guilty of an offense if, you know, that person was unauthorized, to try and give some leeway. Does that say it correctly, Lloyd, do you think?
Yes, but I do think you have that, that the owner still has the responsibility for the dog. If it does attack somebody, even if they are unauthorized.
Yeah, obviously there'd still be a liability piece and...
They could be sued civil.
Yeah, there was a civil piece that would be outside, it would be ultra-violent to the bylaw, but there would still potentially be a civil piece that we can't govern. So we looked at clarifying, there was a number of things about identifying words like "it", which was in reference to the dog, weren't particularly clear. We tried to make sure it was very clear about some of those things. That's the main piece that since we received second reading and then the feedback from council and Mr. Walsh, those were the things that we have tweaked. I want to point out too, and I put it in your background, is that as much as we're having this discussion here tonight, you are not under any obligation to pass the reading.
Right.
That yes, two readings have happened and we've had some public input, which I would again say is most welcome and has been great. We can have some further discussion on this until council's very comfortable with it. And it can sit in this state for, you know, as long as it's necessary to get council comfortable and the community comfortable with where we're at. So I just wanted to point those out while Mr. Walsh was here, that we did try and adopt a number of those recommendations.
Thank you very much. Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I also have some concerns about the fee structure, the fines.
Okay.
I think that they could be tweaked quite a bit.
Can we maybe hang on to all the concerns we have and try to figure out how we're going to proceed here? We have a delegation that was put there at 5:30. So maybe, Ryan, if you want to do your presentation, and then afterwards, we will deal right after with all the concerns we have with the bylaw and the business arising. Will that be fine? Counselor agree?
I'm of the opinion, given the, you know, the public feedback and given some of the comments I've heard around the table here, that it might be good to just table, table this and tell our committee of the whole and then we can have an in-depth discussion if maybe we can get Lloyd to be here and resolve some of these concerns.
Okay, so that's a good point. How would council feel discussing all the issues that have been brought today, being fee structure, off-leash park or exercise, whatever that is, and language and other modification to the bylaw? Would you feel comfortable tabling this discussion to the first meeting of February?
Motion.
Can you give me a yearning?
Are we directing administration to make additional changes?
No, to bring that bylaw forward for us to discuss all what has been discussed today and make sure that further changes occur, if that's our desire, or to leave the bylaw the way it is right now.
What would be the purpose in us tabling it for another, I mean, why not have that discussion tonight, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Okay, well, that discussion can happen tonight if you so wish. This is just a recommendation that Counselor Quinn is bringing forward, but does not have to happen that way. We can keep it on the business arising exactly where it is.
If we make a motion, Mayor, and depending on the vote, then we follow the vote. So if it's a vote to table and there's three against four or whatever, then we have to discuss it tonight.
I strongly feel that we need to table because I think there's too much discussion to take place here. I have some serious concerns at this point in time before we'll ever go on to third reading. And I feel as Jeff has said, we're not in a hurry to do this. And I don't want the public to think that we're working through something that we don't understand fully. And so I'm prepared to make that motion.
I guess what my question is, is we don't have to go to third reading to have a discussion tonight.
No.
So we have members of the community that are here. Do we want to send them back home and come back again in a month so that we can have a discussion that we could have while everybody's here?
And that is also...
My thought isn't about we need to pass a third reading tonight.
Okay, I understand. But I guess one of the things I'm thinking about in a committee, the whole, we can come up with some more recommendations and we can have public input still at a public hearing before we pass a third, before we pass a third reading. There's a lot of stuff here to go through. A lot, in my mind, there's a lot of changes here.
Well, this is why...
And I don't know that we have the time to go through that in a big way tonight.
Okay, let's get a few things clear here. We postponed third reading especially to have the public here today. That's the purpose of postponing third reading.
I wasn't aware of that because I thought it would be a public hearing.
But the time between second reading and third reading is to allow the people input, which we have done. And we have had quite a better response for that. So I appreciate what you're saying in respect to the people who are there. It could well be that when we deal with the dog bylaw, that we may look at the points that have been brought forward and say, yes, we need more information, therefore we will not pass the reading. And it could be as simple as that.
Well, I'm fine with that either way. I just, I'm concerned if we get it right.
No, but that would be the way to get it right. You allow for more time before you pass the reading. Right? Okay. Counselor?
Andrew.
Do we have a bylaw placed presently for dogs?
Yes.
Yes, there is a dog bylaw.
The previous bylaw has not been read.
Okay, then we have been working very good on the previous bylaw. As I look at this bylaw now, it is very involved. It's the duty of this council to protect the citizens of the community. And being a dog owner myself for 65 years, a dog is part of the community. And I think there's too much material to cover tonight to get, to put this bylaw in place. And I'm suggesting that we need to look at maybe even forming a committee and having some of our presenters on that committee and have the input of the citizens too. This is no small thing.
I think we got very good input today.
But I think that input could go even further once we get involved in this bylaw. I think there'll be a lot more involvement in that, in our citizens.
I think maybe in reference to your comments in our existing bylaw, that comes back to the purpose why this bylaw was put together. Our existing bylaw has not been adequate and we've had some very significant instances happen in this last year that need to be addressed.
But they've been dealt with.
They were, but it took a lot longer to deal with them and we had a lot more problems that came up because we didn't have the structure and infrastructure there to deal with it in the existing bylaw.
But Counselor, I don't think that we can have a knee-jerk reaction.
How knee-jerk is this when we've been working on this for how many months now? This isn't our first night discussing this, guys. We've been working on this for months. This isn't...
Maybe we have been working on it, but has the public been working on it with us?
Well, I would suggest...
Once we put this out there, now we're starting to get public input.
And I would suggest that that input's been coming in for a couple of months now since we had our first reading. And that's why we have some of the changes that have been brought. I just, while I don't have a problem with us putting off a third reading, there's no need for, like, as administration pointed out earlier, there's no rush that we have to pass there's a third reading. But I think that there's value when we have the public here. We don't often have this many people in our gallery. I think there's value in us having a discussion and talking about those points.
Okay.
Do we want to, okay, if we decide to do that, do we want to have input back and forth?
I think...
With council?
Okay, I think essentially what we need to do...
I don't have a problem with that either.
Well, yes, except from a governance point of view, it's not exactly the right way to go about. We will maybe, if you don't mind, leave the bylaw as business arising and at that point let's make a decision how we want to go about. And Ryan, how long do you think your presentation will be?
Oh, with some discussion, 15 minutes, talks?
Okay. Is 15 minutes okay? All right. Thank you very much. So maybe what we will have is, Ryan, we have the town people there too, so maybe we need to allow them to do that presentation.
Oh, it's moving legs.
Bit of a shift to talk.
Oh, my time is...
Take your time, Mr. Stewart. Thank you.
This is a short version. Here's your synopsis, Counselor.
Pardon me?
I said, Counselor Barnes, I said, here's your synopsis.
This is the Reader Digest version. That's good.
Yeah, we can call it that, yeah. Thank you for having me.
So thank you for coming and we give you your 15 minutes and hopefully we'll be totally enlightened with the municipal development plan. Just for people to know, Counselor Ennam sits on the committee and so did I. And there were quite a few members of the community at large that sat on that committee. Members of the committee, members of the education board, and quite a few other people that were there to land their hands.
Yeah, we had a six-member steering committee.
Yes. Members of the business community also.
Yeah, diverse membership. Okay, well, thanks again for having me, members of council. Going to try and be very quick today, start with a very broad overview of what is a municipal development plan. You see on the screen there where the MVP falls in the hierarchy of municipal plans and provincial plans. So it is our principal policy document. It provides an overarching policy context for virtually all the land use and development related decisions we make in addition to some other contexts. So we've got a new, a brand new, where are they? There, okay, there's the SSRP. So that's new as of this summer. Prior to that, we had the provincial land use policies. Now we have a specific regional plan. So communities across the southern portion of the province are talking extensively about how they address this thing, how they bring their plans and documents into alignment with it. So this, like I say, this is a policy document. Now, at times, I'd say the steering committee maybe struggled a little bit with this, what is policy versus regulation? But the intent of this thing is to inform our regulatory document, which is our land use bylaw. So you'll find this, some of the policy statements are not very prescriptive, they're general. Of course, in the land use bylaw, you're going to look for more prescriptive statements, stuff that can be quantified to ensure that the law can be applied fairly and consistently. Section 632 of the Act requires us to do and address a few things. It says we must talk about future land use, the coordination of land use with adjacent municipalities, provision of transportation and other infrastructures. There's other things that we may do. Under the may statement, they say really anything that council wants to include, this document can virtually be whatever you want it to be as long as we include some staples in there. And it is a mandatory document for communities over 3,500 people. Now, this document will take the place of our current municipal development plan, which is from 2003. So a little background, as we mentioned, steering committee meetings largely informed the makeup of this thing. We had a community questionnaire early on.
We had a community questionnaire early on. That was in the fall of 2013. We had a pretty good response rate actually for questionnaires related to land use planning matters. 26% isn't, it may look bad, but it's actually not that bad. We had an open house on November 6th there. Didn't have great attendance, but that's not always a bad thing.
The donuts were good though.
The donuts were good.
That may be another statement.
The people at the office enjoyed the leftovers. And of course, we refer to the county, the school district, and the blood tribe. That's something we have to do pursuant to section 636 of the Act. Didn't receive comments back.
From either, any of them?
Didn't receive specifically, no. We will, we will notify them again at the public hearing, assuming council wishes to move forward with this thing. And at that time, if we don't hear anything, then we've done what we're legislated to do. Okay, I'm going to get into some of the background of this document. Of course, we do extensive background work to make sure that we make sort of the correct policy judgments. Now, looking at population, this is of course a fundamental thing. Our five-year average, this is of course federal census data. So our annual growth rate from 2006 to 2011 was 0.7%. And now our 50-year average, 0.52. You've got DC periods in there where there's a little bit of decline, a little bit better growth. To put this into context, the city of Lethbridge over the same period grew at a rate of 2.3% annually, which is, you call fairly strong growth. Somewhere like Okatoks within the commuter shed of Calgary grew at 8.5% annually. So a little bit of context there. We call this, you know, fairly slow, modest growth, but steady in terms of your 50-year average. Now, you see on the chart there at the bottom, gives you an idea of how big the town is in comparison to what I call similar communities in the region. Now, of course, it's hard to compare because these communities don't always have water courses, stuff like that. They're all developed a little bit differently. But safe to say that we are considerably less dense than some of our neighbors. 0.58 people per person per acre. Okay, population projections are something we would always do with the municipal development plan. And you'll see here, this is based on average annual percentage growth. So if we continue at that 0.5% rate in 2041, a population of 4,100 or 52 wouldn't be unrealistic. If we have more optimistic growth, maybe something closer to 5,000.
Ryan, I have a question regarding those population figures. And this is a what-if scenario. I'm always into what ifs. If for some reason, all of a sudden, we had an influx of people over a two-year period of time, where do you sit with our infrastructure?
Right now, we can serve 6,000 people.
We can serve 6,000 people now. So, so these numbers are actually good numbers, and we're in good shape already.
Yeah, if that was the case. An infrastructure perspective, I would say yes. I mean, I'm definitely not the expert there from what the content in this document, I would agree, yes. Into a fairly far-reaching horizon there in 2041. I'll just share with you another, so this using some different methods. These arithmetic and logarithmic projections are mathematical extrapolations. These are generally used for very short periods or much longer periods. And then you'll see the cohort projections on the right there. These, these are sort of the standard that we want to use. They take into account the elements of fertility, mortality, migration, and looking back either five, 10, or 20 years. So you'll see in the last five-year period, we've got, we've got a growth number that's pretty much consistent with that 0.5% rate. But if we look into further, into cohort data, looking further back, we actually get negative projections because of some of those periods of decline in the last federal census years. Okay, I'll keep going here, but stop me at any time. The provincial, the province has recently begun producing these population projections. So they produce these by census division. So we're down in the southwest corner there. Their projection for us is between a half to 1% annual growth into 2041. So pretty consistent with what we're seeing here. You'll see the other areas, and the highway two-quarter of the province getting into that higher growth areas, places like Lifebridge in between 1 and 1.5%. Of course, these are general, not so much community, community specific. And again, these were produced before the price of oil plummeted. So safe to say if they were to do these now, they might input a little more caution because immigration is a big part of these projections. And that would be the provincial average there, 1.5%. Okay, we look at demographics. So this is from the 2011 census there. You'll note that the 5 to 9 age cohort is our largest cohort. And 2006, the leading cohort was the 15 to 19 age group. Our average age in 2011 was 38.4 compared to an average of 36.5 in the province and 40 and a half years in Canada as a whole. So this tells us a few things. It tells us the town is still a destination for people wanting to raise families and probably also for people seeking to retire. And like with most small urban municipalities, where we struggle is retaining the workforce age populations. And you see that in the comparison graph there. So I've got the census division, and I've got the province. And I find it interesting that the relationship there, we've got the youngest, we've got the most of the youngest and the oldest. But then in the 20 to 64, that working workforce age population, we've got a lower proportion.
Does that take into, does that factor in those who live here but work outside of our community?
Census.
I mean, we have people in the rural patch and stuff, right?
Based on where you live.
Okay.
Okay, looking at some assessment information here and some comparable communities, we have about $86,000 of assessment per capita. Looking at some of these other communities down at the bottom portion there, these ones, safe to say, have more robust industrial sectors, more employment generating land uses. And that's probably why they have greater assessments per capita. Now, we generally find that there's sort of a linear relationship from how far you are from a large urban center. Say the city of Lethbridge, the farther away you go, you generally see, you know, an increased proportion of non-residential assessment. However, we come in a little bit under some of these guys. You know, it'd be nice to see this number coming down, decrease some of that load on the residential tax base and bump up that non-residential tax base.
Look at Raymond Hole in macro and in the graph.
Yeah, those places where they're within the commuter shed, like I'm saying, then that's pretty typical. You look at somewhere like Coalhurst, and you know, they're even less than Raymond.
But then you look at Quaresome, you can see the groups in the industry.
Yeah. So moving on here, looking at some zoning data. Again, I'm just touching on a few things from the background portion of the municipal development plan. I suggest we've got sort of a balanced distribution of all the land use zoning categories, except for, again, look at the shortage in the industrial land use category in comparison. 6.3% there. I mean, these, no, definitely Quaresome and Tabor. Tabor definitely as a major industrial sector. Coaldale's is growing, and Quaresome's is fairly established as well. But would be nice to see those numbers come up for certain. Some more dwelling stuff. We see in the single detached dwelling category, this is, it's pretty consistent across the board. This is in keeping with what's going on in the region for the most part. We've got a bit of a mix of housing stock. You know, you see some of these places, Pincher Creek and the like, having a bit more of some of these other options. But, you know, where we do see, you know, no apartments over five stories and some stuff like that. Now, the single detached dwelling, I mean, it's well-established, of course, it's the prevailing residential form. And while it's, it costs considerably more than alternatives, which can range from, you know, 20 to 50% less if you look at some Canadian mortgage and housing corporation data. So nice to see, see a nice diversified housing stock. That's sort of the thrust of some of the provincial policy stuff in the Saskatchewan Regional Plan and that sort of thing. Okay, we produced this chart as sort of a routine exercise for communities to get an idea of what sort of land needs they might anticipate as they grow. And now this, this may be a bit overwhelming here, but it's a very simple chart, really. If you have any questions, stop me. But we talked about land needs based on a projected low, low growth rate of half percent and a very high one of 1.5%. We see in this range, based on four and a half units per net acre, now that equates to 6,000 square foot lots on average. So that's the minimum lot size in the R1 district. So that's kind of what we used here as our base model. But anywhere from a range of 24 to 130 net acres for residential development. So that's, that's an acreage that we can easily accommodate within our current boundaries. Okay, we produced sort of a general conceptual map that states where these different land uses are going to occur. Now, as you know, we've got the west area structure planned into these areas, the east area redevelopment planned into here. We've got a limited area of industrial lands and then some commercial opportunities here. Now, a new sort of commercial node, hopefully realize some highway commercial opportunities in there. And I mean, this is, again, this is general and conceptual, would not necessarily preclude other land uses from coming in, but it gives us some, some direction. Okay, I'm just going to take you quickly here through a few policy excerpts, maybe give you an idea of how, how we might actually use a municipal development plan from time to time. You know, oftentimes, these things will sit on the shelf and they'll collect dust, but they do get used. So I'm just going to take you through a few sort of scenarios here and touch on a few sort of newer policies that I'd like to show you. So on this one, we talk about the subdivision authority has to address municipal reserve at the time of subdivision. You can take up to 10% in accordance with the Act. So oftentimes, the subdivision authority is left wondering, should they take a cash and lieu dedication or land dedication to what extent and where? We kind of give them a little bit of criteria here with this one. And we talk about in this bottom policy here, a 400-meter walking distance. So that's a quarter mile, 1,300 feet from an appropriate park space. And try to find, to find appropriate park space and sort of come up with a non-owneress minimum that ensures that a park, an appropriate park space is within what we see is to be a reasonable walking distance.
And right now, is we're not quite in this town?
So if we look at the park spaces within the community, I'd say we pretty much capture, you know, for the most part, we capture all the core areas. Some of the peripheral areas, not as much. But hopefully, this tells us that, you know, once we get some subdivision activity in here, it's time for a park dedication, maybe a small one. And we've got, we've got some other policies in the documents suggest that maybe we should establish sort of a hierarchy of parks, from the regional to neighborhood to pocket parks and give you a range of different options. Okay, moving on here, just going to take you through a few more. There's lots of talk about planning cooperation and related policies in the SSRP. In going through the, our current IMDP with the county, which is from 2007, looking at the county's maps, I realized that the county hasn't introduced an urban fringe district. It did say that they were required to do so in the urban fringe plan. We probably need to revisit this thing.
You say they haven't done it yet?
They have, and this was a pretty bare bones document, you know. It might be worth doing the full re-blown thing event, right?
Would you be the one who would work with us to work on that one?
Yeah, we do these IMDPs all the time, that's with almost all the communities. In fact, we're doing rural to rural IMDPs now, which is kind of a new initiative. But yeah, they're a useful, very useful tool. I mean, as it stands now, all the areas on the perimeter have the county's base ag zone. So in the county, you can get up four subdivisions out of a quarter section now, as it stands now.
Okay, so can I ask a Ms. Regent a question? Since this is something that needs to be done, could it be put on the agenda for the next meeting when we meet with the county to try to see if we could establish a time, a date to try to see if there is a desire to do a review?
From my memory of that meeting, we, I think we put it on the agenda.
Did we put it?
I think so. But maybe just follow through.
Yes.
Not to take Ryan's speech. Some of you may remember Counselor Creed perhaps, and Counselor Edmonds. This revision was on the table with the IMDP, and there was some roadblocks to getting it signed. So there was some work done very recently to get this done, and it ended up being shelved.
Okay.
Because there was some issues there. So yeah, we could resurrect it relatively easy, I think.
Because if there is a provincial policy in place as to the need for such a thing, then we should try to follow through.
I think the consensus was rather than propose a new plan, we try our best to amend the existing one.
Yeah, at least start there.
Yeah, you're exactly correct. It was the fact that it was a new one that was not well taken. Okay, thank you.
Good, yeah, you bet. Okay, now I'm going to take you just down a little more there, sort of an application. I'll just read this one. When decisions are made regarding the conversion and servicing of raw lands for residential growth, the town's assessment ratio should be reviewed to ensure any imbalance between residential and non-residential assessment is manageable. I suggest maybe we have a rezoning to take, take lands out of our urban reserve or ag district and make them a conventional urban district. You know, maybe we see at that time that we've got this disproportionate assessment balance, and we want to see non-residential growth. So it's a policy tool to sort of, you know, I think, give us guidance on some of this stuff. And the bottom policy there is similar. And this comes, the impetus for this again out of the SSRP, which states that we should increase the proportion of new development that takes place within already development areas through infill development, et cetera. Just got one or, one or two more here. This is a pretty big one in my mind. And this comes out of the used land efficiently section of the SSRP. So you'll see, what this is mostly going to do is inform the development of the new land use bylaw, which I understand we're planning to undertake probably after this thing is done. So we talk, the SSRP talks about increasing density. They're very straightforward about increased densities. So how do we do that? How do, we basically have to produce measurables so we can understand what our density is now and are we increasing it? This is a sensitive topic for a lot of communities, and there aren't measurables in the SSRP. The land use secretary, as we understand, is still sort of coming up with criteria for how, what municipalities are to do because we have five years to file that statutory declaration that says that we comply with this thing. So these, this gives us...
I'm just wondering, when you talk about density, I think of more people than more because it's a smaller area.
That's what it is.
And, and I look at our community, I think we, I don't like that idea of high density population. You know, cities do that out of necessity because they don't have a lot of land. But in a rural area where we have more land, are you saying that they're... Is it a requirement? Are they forcing this? Because I certainly don't feel like I want to have, to be able to, as a, from a Realtor's point of view. When I have clients come, they're asking me for a large lot, I don't want to have to be like the Lethbridge Realtors, say, oh, I've got a huge lot here. It's 50, 50 feet by 100 feet, it's huge, you know? When I look at a huge lot, I think of my lot, 82 and a half by 280, that's a large lot. But an average sized lot in our community now is what, do you have 70 or 68 by 125? Which in my estimation is a...
Yeah, 65 and 120.
Yeah, which I think is a good sized lot. And really, I can't see why they would push smaller lots.
But, you know, that was under the SSRP.
Yeah, well, I don't like that.
Which we were part of the review and had a chance to... Of which we were part of the review and had a chance to...
I do not recall them bringing up the density thing on that, and I listened pretty carefully, but I'm hearing it now, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
We did, we did address the issue.
Jeff?
I think, Councilor, and this is something you obviously will need to discuss later.
Yeah.
The intent is, do we have appropriate locations for infill?
Right.
Do we have appropriate locations to put a cul-de-sac in? And the fact of the matter is, for us financially, it's a huge benefit.
Yeah.
Because we're not extending infrastructure miles out of town. So I think more than maybe trying to cut down the size of existing lots in town, that the question for this council is going to be, do we have some appropriate infill locations? Do we have places where we have infrastructure in place that we can readily accommodate development? I think that'll be the more proactive way to look at it for this council.
And then you've got to present it to the public to see if they approve it, don't they?
Sure, of course, of course. Yeah, and I think the key is relative density increases. You know, we think of the word density and high density, you know, and high rises popping to our brains, but, you know, relative to what does it mean in the Carson context?
Yeah.
So we've kind of got some open, you know, consider the creation of density targets. Well, the province hasn't said what those targets have to be, that's, we're retaining our autonomy, we just have to consider these things. And density is a tough one, you know, oftentimes, there's an appetite for it, but people get scared. People get scared as soon as you say density increases, but when you explain to them that, you know, maybe their taxes are gonna go down, maybe we're gonna have better services, that sort of stuff, you know, and maybe it's a different conversation. So these are some ideas and some tools we can employ in the new land use bylaw.
One thing we'll definitely have, though, is more dogs. We should keep that in mind.
No, I'm sorry.
Part of the MVP.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, one thing I'd point out, you know, on item C there, maximum lot sizes. We always have minimums, a lot of places don't have maximums. You know, we've got different districts, we've got country residential, we've got these, you know, and council's gonna, you know, that's council's prerogative, how they want the land use district thing to apply, but a lot of new communities in the Orks region are considering maximum sizes now. Something to consider. Okay, just a couple quick more examples here, and again, like I said, when does the MVP come up in our day-to-day lives? For council, maybe not always that much, but it often does for the subdivision and development authority, definitely for the subdivision and development appeal board, for the municipal government board on subdivision appeals, they look at these things, and they have to make decisions consistent with these policies. So one policy I sort of like here is, you know, sometimes multifamily housing, affordable housing, gets a bad reputation, you know, and rightfully so. So if we ensure that we have performance standards in our land use bylaw or something like that, that makes sure we get a high quality type of development, we can dismiss some of those, we call it nimbyism, not in my backyard, some of those native stereotypes about it, right? So that's just one example there. Take you through one last thing, and hopefully, there'll be some additional guidance for the land use bylaw here, but in how we allocate uses within our different land use districts. A permitted use being a use by right, so we have to look very carefully at what we make a permitted use, what we make discretionary use. Now, we talked a bit about, what was the one there, local food production and urban agriculture, maybe there's opportunities for some permitted uses and to sort of allow through our allocation of uses and our exemptions in the land use bylaw, to make sure that we have an economic development climate that says we're open for business and that type of thing. So there's just a few examples of how I think that'll sort of assist us and maybe, you know, facilitating some more of those employment generating land uses and increasing our non-residential assessment base. But again, it's a policy document, it says right in the Act that council isn't obliged to carry out any of these items in this document, because some of these are action-oriented items. We say we're gonna approach the county, there's no requirement that we do that, it's a policy document. So this is, just last, we'd like to point out to Madam Mayor, that I have noticed a few, a couple little typos in here, and I'm sure you guys have too, and apologize for them. I think if you're comfortable moving forward after public hearing, we can make sure that we catch all of those, consider any comments from the public and any stakeholders, but yeah, I have caught a few, so.
Thank you very much, Ryan, for this presentation. The document is there for you to review, maybe take a little bit of time to finish your reading of this very comprehensive document. If you feel there is something that is lacking, missing, please make a note and send the comments that you may have to Jeff, and Jeff could send them back to Orion, and if those amendments can be readily made, they will be made. That document has gone through quite a few reviews by quite a few of us, but it's never perfect until the last draft. So we will carry on to do improving that as I saw a few things as I needed to.
Yeah.
But thank you so much, it was a work that took us quite a few months.
Yeah.
And there will be a public hearing before we have the third reading of that document. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much, Mr. Walsh, for being so patient. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't see your hand.
I've got one question for Ryan.
Okay.
In our development committee, do we follow these policies pretty close?
MPC?
Yep.
Well, and as you guys know, I'm relatively new to the town, I've been with the commission longer, but I'd suggest that, yes, we probably do.
Do we need to tighten them up a little bit?
Well, you know, a lot of times, everything in the, there's enough guidance and regulation in the land use bylaw that we don't always have to look to these things, it's when there's uncertainties and, you know, there's subjectivities, you know, what is this that's subjective? I don't know, we need guidance, but we look here. So I know that's not a great answer, I think we probably do, but my experience being limited, that's probably all I can say.
But essentially, your question is an interesting question, because the land use bylaw is also a document that we're going to review. Am I correct, Jeff? So what's the timeline for the review? Do we have any idea?
We haven't set a firm timeline because we've still got public hearings, third reading on this, we've got a number of pieces there, so...
So this document needs to be approved before we go on? Okay, so that will help to understand...
My concern is, you know, we're allowing discretionary uses and, what's the other, encroachments and stuff like that, are we, are we too easy on that kind of stuff? You know, are we taking a stand on, on that kind of thing, you know, deviation from the actual plans? Oh yeah, we can, we can give an encroachment on that.
But that is up to the subdivision committee to apply the rule.
As a real estate agent, Councilor Barnes is well aware that we have a lot of...
Unique variants.
Yeah, variances, reports and things like that that happen in this community.
Well, and through, the council is the keeper, the bylaw council grants the variance powers, right? So I think it'll, the big thing, the conversation, who will be the steering committee for the land use bylaw? Find with a lot of the rural municipalities, they generally sit as their own steering committee, some of the urbans like a bit more of a, you know, a member from the chamber or whatever, but that'll be up to you to decide.
Right, so that might be another conversation that we may need to have. Thank you very much, Jeff.
I just think it's important for council to remember, as we go through the public hearing on this document and then the third reading, this is the policy document, not the legislative document.
That we do prior on.
Okay, so we're talking about the policy piece here, and those kind of questions are absolutely appropriate when we start discussing the land use bylaw.
Yes.
But we have this hurdle first.
Yes, thank you so much for setting us straight on this. Okay, so we will have to deal with this municipal development plan under request for decision. So let's go back to 6A now, which is the bylaw, 1625, the dog bylaw. As you know, we have first and second reading that have been passed, but since then, we have really amended things quite a bit. The first thing we need to do is, first of all, decide if we have made enough changes to allow for a revision of that bylaw by way of resolution as amended. That's the first thing we need to do, before we even consider third reading. So essentially, what I heard today is this bylaw does not address the off-leash area. So how does council feel regarding this? I hear that some of you would like to see a park with house designated for off-leash, for some of the larger dogs at a certain time, smaller, medium dog at another time. That is one possibility, or having a fence park, considering that a fence park will satisfy 200 dog owner, maybe they'll use it, but at a cost that might be $30,000 or more to fence it. So that's another thing. So we need to decide what to do here. Councilor Barnes?
So Todd made reference to this discussion that was taking place online about that, and where he actually got actively involved in it, was specifically in regards to off-leash areas. My impression from conversations with him based upon that was that going the direction of a fenced area would probably be problematic from a health perspective. And just policing, picking up stuff, and it tends to, it tends to spread disease unless that's done actively. So I, I don't have a problem with us addressing that as an issue, I'm not sure we want to be putting off doing something with the bylaw until we figure out what we're gonna do with an off-leash, for an off-leash area. I think it's something we need to address.
Okay, so would council feel comfortable directing administration to sit with Mr. Griffiths and to try to address the parameters for the off-leash area in parks and all what it entail? Would you feel comfortable to allow administration to sit with Mr. Griffiths and define an area, location, and the parameters that goes along with that?
No.
Councilor Benry, I hear you saying no. Tell me why.
No, because I don't think that that's the only thing that's concerned here.
No, no, let's, let's deal with one point right now, I'm just dealing with one point. I'm dealing with the off-leash...
How many bylaw officers are you gonna hire? Because if you get an off-leash park and it's designated off-leash or whatever, and times are involved, our bylaw officer's gonna be spending all his time up there policing that.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, that's your...
If it has some name, it's not gonna object.
Okay, that is your comment, and I appreciate your comment. Any other comment, Councilor Creed?
Well, just, I saw, the first delegation indicated that she exercises her dogs just out of town, and the town isn't that big. I don't, since Mr. Walsh is still here, would I permit it to ask him a question about where he exercises his dog?
He may not like the answer. He may not, he may not want to respond to that publicly.
Yeah, I may not want to respond to that. Prior to me being aware of the fact that there was an on-leash policy, I would walk my dog on-leash until such time as I reached the creek area, in which case then it would become off-leash. Generally, the times that I walk my dog, I could probably count on one hand how many people I've seen down there, and if I do see somebody coming in the distance, I put it back on its leash and on we go.
Okay.
So that, that is how I would do that, or in my backyard, but unfortunately, I have a fairly large lot, but my backyard is not big enough to exercise a German ship adequately.
And I would agree that, you know, that creek area provides two natural fences, just the water line and the hillside, and I think, you know...
Okay, so can we go back to, also, how many of you would support administration, I know Councilor Benry doesn't, but how many of you would support having administration look at location and parameters for off-leash? Would you support that?
Is there enough time between now and committee the whole for administration?
I don't think so, we might have to push a little bit further.
Yeah, no, I think Dr. Jeff indicated that he was willing to give us some advice, I would like to take that advice.
Take that advice. Councilor Barnes?
I, I think that's the only way we could proceed as far as looking together on off-leash area, so, yes.
Councilor Edmond?
Yeah, I think that would work, I think one area we might look at is the agridome area.
Okay, so those are different kind of points that administration can take, and I also support the idea of looking into location and parameters and inviting Councilor Griffiths for that. That is one item, there are many more items. Councilor Benry, maybe you were talking about fees, so do you want to look into the fees of first presented? Talked about the fees, $200 being too much for the Schedule A that we have, which is the second time a dog would have committed an infraction according to this bylaw. So is $200 excessive, or was it essentially the, as a deterrent, leaving the possibility for a bylaw officer to use his judgment, as you said?
Well, like you was mentioned before, we have a current, very apt bylaw officer who uses good discretion, but what happens when he retires and somebody else is hired? Are they gonna do the letter of the law? And so, and so our fee structures, everything that has to do with this dog bylaw has to be there. Fair, and I don't think that we're ready to do a third reading on it.
No, no, we're not, we're not there, Councilor Benry, I'm not asking for a third reading.
I'm, I'm just saying this, Mayor, I don't think that there's been enough study done with the public involved to even go, go ahead tonight on this bylaw.
So can we have a discussion about it?
Well, you can have a discussion on it, but how are you gonna get your input from your public?
Councilor Benry, can I just remind you that when administration was asked to look into the fee structure, if you remember, they brought us the, a big display of what other towns were doing for similar offenses. So in other words, they did not, those numbers didn't come off the head. They were there because they were comparing what we have and what other towns have.
But we heard one citizen say that the fee structure was too high.
Yeah, but this is why we're discussing that right now. Is it too high on Schedule A?
So are you, are you gonna discuss aggressive dogs, are you gonna discuss...
What we have there is a schedule...
Licensing and all that kind of stuff?
There is a schedule there that has been brought forward by Mr. Walsh. Are we willing to look at the schedule, look at all schedule, and try to see if there is a happy medium between what is proposed and what we've proposed? Essentially, that is what would be the wisest thing to do, is try to see if there is a compromise somewhere that could satisfy all need to protect the public and the other one to satisfy the dog owners. That's what we need to come to.
I guess my first question on the fines would be, is what is the purpose of bringing the fines in? Why, why are we wanting to increase them? There was some reasoning behind it, that maybe needs to be talked about first, because that probably leads us in the direction of where those fines should be.
Okay, so do you want to maybe address that now? Do you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
I've got one question on that section 43, where it says, when a penalty is not specified under the bylaw, a person who is guilty of an offense is liable to a fine not exceeding $10,000, and in default, a payment of fine to imprisonment of up to one year. I don't think we can do that, but that would have to be determined by the court.
That is, that is exactly the whole, that is exactly the whole point for the discussion. Are there some items in that bylaw that are flagrantly... Are there some items in that bylaw that are flagrantly problematic? And maybe administration can address that, or Counselor? We have three things going on.
Sure, sure. Okay. So in my thoughts on where we started from is, I believe one of the catalysts for us looking at this bylaw was some of the events that took place in the last year, where we had a couple of dog owners who were not responsible dog owners, and their dogs were biting people. And we didn't have a mechanism in place to be able to take that dog away from those owners.
And there was another case where a dog bit another dog really bad, and the fee with the vet was really quite high.
Yes.
And then the dog owner did not want to take responsibility for what happened, although that dog was off-leash.
So my understanding of the reason for some of those fines being where they're at is actually part of what Mr. Walsh referenced, in that the fees, the penalties are high enough that the owner, who was the irresponsible dog owner, will relinquish the dog, not necessarily for euthanasia, but so that it can be retrained and sent out elsewhere. We've done with the rescue societies on that. That was the reasoning for some of these fines being as high as they are.
They were there to act as a deterrent.
That's a big deterrent.
That was the purpose.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if you recall, but when, when, when the bylaw came up for first and second reading.
Your concerns.
Yeah, and one of my concerns is that we were licensing aggressive dogs, which I would just say is a vicious dog or a dangerous dog. And my feeling was that, you know, that we shouldn't have tolerance for that. And then the answer was given is that the high fines would deter that and cause them to be, and so really the balance here, and I still feel the same way, you know, I think we have to have zero tolerance towards, you know, dangerous aggressive dogs and irresponsible dog owners, but yet we want to protect the responsible dog owners. So by doing one, are we, you know, by, you know, if we're just using the fines as the deterrent, then it overlaps, it spills over to the responsible dog owners. So I guess that's, that's, that's the challenge, is to still make that, you know, a deterrent. Like for me, I, I'd like to have zero tolerance for the, you know, for a dangerous aggressive dog that's going to be, you know, a danger to the community, but yet still not penalize the responsible dog owners.
Okay. So what solution do you, do you see as being a workable solution?
Okay. And this is, would require quite a bit of revision in the bylaw, but this is why, is to change the fee structure, but to more definitely, and I think Mr. Walsh made some, some progress towards that, is actually defining those dogs which are aggressive in a, in a, in a very definitive way, and basically banning that kind of a dog from the community, instead of finding them, just, you know, make sure that we know that we can definitively define what is a dangerous aggressive dog and, and say, we don't want that kind of a dog in our community.
Okay. So you're referring to what Mr. Walsh brought forward, and that has been incorporated in the bylaw now. Do you feel that definition is satisfactory, or do you feel it still requires further revision?
I'm not sure, because, you know, it's basically just come up to us for, for discussion now.
Right. And this is why we cannot really hurry up in that process.
And that's, that's why I'd like to, I'd like to think about that, if that, if that really meets the criteria or not. So, yeah, I don't have a, an answer for that right now.
Okay. So essentially, I feel if we're not united towards accepting the changes, then it's best not to do it tonight. But let's carry on the conversation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, well, Counselor, you go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, are we, are we listing some of these suggestions that we're getting up with tonight?
I think Jeff is doing that.
Yeah, so carry on, because I love that we're listing them and then you can address.
Yeah.
I, I can't help but recall Counselor Edman's feelings that this is an anti-dog bylaw. And some of the things that are contained in the proposals that we have here, I have to agree with you. I think they are too. And, and I, and I think that we have to be, as Counselor Ben-Gree has mentioned, we have to be fair. I don't think we, I don't, I don't think excessive fines are deterrent as much as they are an aggravant to the people who have dogs. Okay? And we don't want to aggravate people and alienate people thinking that this is an anti-dog community. There are breeds of dogs that are considered dangerous dogs, and they're banned in various communities throughout the country. And, and, and so maybe we need to look at some, something similar to see, you know, whether there are particular breeds that are known to be aggressive, that are known to, you know, be kind in their nature, very nice in their nature, then all of a sudden they turn, right? And we can't deter that. We never know when that is going to happen. So that's why some of these communities have just said outright, "That particular dog breed is not welcome."
But I'm a little bit afraid of that, because then the German Shepherd, that is the closest related to the wolf, where do you put that one?
Well, you know what? I, I feel a lot more comfortable with a German Shepherd than I do a Bouvier or, you know, a Pimblets.
A Bouvier is a German dog.
But, you know, but they're just so big and they scare people. But nevertheless, I, but I think that, I think that there's a, there's a lot more discussion that needs to take place here, and I agree with Counselor Ben-Gree. Maybe we have to have a committee to do a lot more tweaking on this, because there's a lot more tweaking to be done than we can even begin to consider tonight.
I honestly think that if we want good research to be done, we have the privilege of having an intern right now.
Yeah.
Who can really research those things and come up with very diverse recommendations that have been made in different towns that have strong dog bylaw. Maybe let's give administration and Tyler a chance to work on that. And if you have some specifics, because right now you're talking about specifics, you're talking about the breed, like.
That's just one part of my, my train of my thought. That's just one train. I have, I have some other thoughts too that I'd like to express.
Okay, go ahead. So that's about the breeds.
The, that, yeah. But I think the fines themselves are excessive.
Okay.
And, and I think we have to look at, at being reasonable.
Okay.
You know, I don't want the people in the community thinking that this is a, you know, what's the terminology?
Money grab.
Money grab. That's exactly what I'm thinking about. And that's not what it's all about. You know, it's another form of taxation, and, and I think we have to be careful with that. And I, and I think we have to revisit the, the fine structures and, and be fair.
Okay. You view it as a, as a tax grab. I don't view it as such. I view it as being a deterrent and to protect the safety of people in this town. But that's maybe, maybe there's both ideas that are true.
I don't even see it as a deterrent, Mayor. The, if we go back to the reason why those fines were put in, wasn't as a deterrent.
Yeah.
It was when that dog did something aggressive.
We didn't have a structure in place.
It gave us the ability to put, lay a, lay a fine on there that was so high.
Yeah.
That the person gave the dog up.
Yeah.
That was the reasoning behind those lines being where they're at.
That's right.
Wasn't as a deterrent.
Yeah. And the other thing about that too was that not necessarily the dog was going to be euthanized. That wasn't.
No.
That we never, we never brought that up. And I think that that's sometimes, and maybe the public are thinking that's what we're thinking, but we're not. We're just wanting to get that dog out of the community, right? And Lloyd has been very good about removing.
Policy has basically been the, euthanasia is the very, very end of the options. And that's why there have been so few.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay. You know, we, we have the privilege of having.
That gets transferred, not yours.
Oh.
That's what's happening.
We have the privilege of having a bylaw officer. Lloyd, is there something that you want to address, Council, with regarding that bylaw or your thinking?
Now's your chance.
Well, is that something you may want to add to help us clarify our thinking here?
Part of the rationale of fines was, one, when I was first approached about the dog bylaw, I was told and excused the pun to put more bite into the bylaw.
Yes, that was direction of council, correct.
And the second thing that concerns me is if a person doesn't pay a fine, even if it's a $50 fine, it costs the town to have a lawyer come and defend, to defend the ticket and prosecute it properly. And when you look at a $50 fine and you're paying $750 to a lawyer to come down here to court to defend it.
Don't admit it's a lawyer.
Where, is it really worth giving a person a ticket, period?
And that is also a very valid point. We cannot start to subsidize lawyer fee for people mistakes.
I have a problem with this failure to pick up dog poop. How are you going to?
Thank you, Counsel.
How are you going to enforce that? Are we going to do DNA on the dog poop? Go around and check all the dogs?
I think essentially, I think essentially you start to educate people. That is not something that is wrong. I come from Paris, and in Paris, we didn't have a bylaw to clean up the sidewalk, and everybody was slipping and sliding all over the place. And now they have a bylaw where you pick up your poop, and people are being trained, all are doing it? No, of course not. But is that definitely a place that is safer to walk on a sidewalk? It better this. And is that less unsightly? Yes, it is.
Here, they don't do it on the sidewalk, they do it on your grass.
What's that doing?
Am I going to run out and take a picture every time somebody does that?
Okay, well.
No, but what I would suggest, and I've told this to people numerous times, that if they want to make a complaint about somebody's dog defecating on their property or on any public property, they have to be willing to go to court.
Yeah.
I've, I've been told that by a judge himself. He says, "Any bylaw, just about any bylaw you've got written, unless you've got a witness, it's going to get thrown out."
Exactly.
But you see it. A lot of people don't know who the people are. So how are you going to identify them in court?
So that's, that's the point.
That's my point. Am I going to take somebody to court and say, "Your dog defecated on their property," and the judge is going to say, "Did you see it? No, but I was told they did."
They'll throw it out.
I don't exactly what the judge is going to say.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be very hard to.
That's already in the bylaw.
Yeah. But I think. That's been in the previous bylaw. Yeah, but it's, we still have the same problem with the same people doing the same things. The only way I can do it is just take a pictures of them, and hopefully be able to identify them from the pictures.
That's approved.
That's evidence.
Yeah. Counselor Edman is exactly right. It's, you know, it's something that's difficult to prove. We have, we have littering bylaws, but how do you, you'll find somebody for littering, you have to catch them in the act, you have to have proof that they did it, but you still have the bylaw, you still, or you still have the law in place so that you do have a remedy when you catch somebody that's violating, you know, this law. So, so, yeah, you may not catch everybody, but you'll catch somebody at some time, and that will be a lesson for, for other people to say, "Well, I'm going to maybe not let my dog do that, or I'm not going to litter," or whatever, but.
And in a town like Carstens, it takes one or two people to get caught and fined for the work you get out. Don't get caught.
And thank you very much.
Don't do it. Go ahead. Yeah, no problem. So it just seems, from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of good, responsible dog owners that are worried that our efforts to hinder the irresponsible dog owners will carry over onto them. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't have, and I don't want to overcomplicate the bylaw. I do not want to do that. But I wonder if we shouldn't have a definition and maybe some designation or, you know, we have here in the bylaw, a reference to unsuitable pet owner. And that, that includes in the definition, it says they're unable to control or unable to provide proper care. I, I think.
She's staring at your boots.
I think, I think that the, the high fines that we want to impose are better directed at irresponsible pet owners. These are people who, multiple offenders, they don't tag their dogs, they, I mean, specifically multiple offenders is, I think, the big problem.
That was the idea.
And I, I think that if, if we had a designation where, hey, this person's responsible, their dog is properly tagged, they're always, you know, abiding by the laws the best they can, maybe there's a, a different fee structure. Instead of having an aggressive dog designation, we have a irresponsible pet owner designation.
But that is difficult to define.
No, it is, it is. But I, but I think if we had some of that, I mean, it's already there. It's already there. We're just saying, look, if you've been designated as, as that, we're currently calling it a, what do we call it, an unfit? I just read it, sorry. An unsuitable pet owner. If you, if you've been labeled with that unsuitable pet owner designation, then you probably, next time you go in for a dog tag, it won't, you won't be able to get one, right? And then, and you'll pay higher fees if you're caught with a pet that violates some of these. It's just a thought that helps push the intent of what we're trying to do onto the offenders that, that we're looking at.
Okay.
So something to consider.
So that's a new idea.
By the way, I have five things. That was one.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
But we can discuss that. Discuss that.
I'm so sorry. Yeah. Why don't you, okay. How do we want to deal with it? Counselor Pivoy, do you have something?
It depends on what time you want to stay here.
Well, yeah, that's what I, I still think this needs to go to a different, another time to, to really get it in depth, but just to, if I could ask Lloyd a question. With some of the difficult dogs in the community, how many times have you had to talk to them? You know, like, you know, we've got in the bylaw, you know, first offense, second offense, third offense. I'm thinking there are some people that have had five or six or seven.
More than sixty.
That these had to talk to. And maybe, maybe that's, that's when the fines need to start shooting up, maybe not after the first, second, or third defense, but after the fourth or fifth defense, then we, then we shoot the fines through the roof so that people start to say, "Oh, they are serious about this." Is that?
I'll let you do the answer here.
No, I, I just want to add to that, because I want more of that answer. With, with that, how many times, when we're talking about that first warning, is that the first time, or is it a formal warning versus, "I've talked to you 10 times, and now you're getting a warning?"
Yeah.
I don't know if you really want to hear my answer.
Yeah, we do.
I was very much dismayed when I was told by council to make the first fine home warning.
The first what?
The first offense.
First offense, a warning. I think if you look at the record, as it stood with me anyway, and you're probably right, your next bylaw officer may be very, by the book, $500, I couldn't care less. But if you look at my track record, the, I think there's probably three warnings for every one fine that I've given up.
Exactly.
And it's, and even the fines are not to the maximum that's allowed by the bylaw. And I think that's what you have to understand, is the bylaw is the maximum fine. And I think it was Counselor Edmonds that mentioned the $10,000 or a year imprisonment. That's something that a judge has to know in your bylaw, what you set as a maximum. He also should know what you set as a minimum. But as Counselor Ben-Gree said, there is discretionary measures you can take. I mean, most parking tickets that I've given up were $27 tickets, not $75, $150, and even $250 tickets per parking in a handicap parking stall. But does that address your question?
So in other words, you have been a very compassionate person.
Probably a little too lenient.
So there's been multiple warnings given before we ever get to the.
You said three warnings before you get to the fine.
Okay. Thank you so much. Counselor Pivoy, do you want to address the rest of your questions?
Yeah, I have a couple there.
Thank you.
The, I think that the, the dog run area should be a privilege, that if your dog violates the sanctity of that, then you're no longer welcome, and there should be additional fines if you bring your dog back after being penalized and. if you bring your dog back after being penalized and kicked out of that area. So that's one. I have.
Did you hear that, Jeff?
No, sorry.
No problem, let me just give it to you again. If there's, if there's a nuisance within the dog run area, I think one of the first penalties should just be that you can't bring your dog back to this area anymore, you've lost the privilege, now you'll have to go out to the county or wherever for that. So you, you lose the privilege of, and certainly any untagged pet running around in there could never be there, right? And, and if you do, you lose the privilege again. Even if you run and go get a tag afterwards, it's like, no. Right? So also, you know, I appreciate Mr. Walsh's reference to people who might bring forward unsubstantiated accusations against pets, just out of malice, you know? I don't like my neighbor, so that little dog bit me. Where's your proof, right? I think maybe there should be a penalty for maybe repeated unsubstantiated claims to discourage that behavior, because I do see that as a threat. I know that, that kind of thing does go on. I think, going back to support something Councillor Barca said, and I really think this is necessary, when we do get this hammered out, whatever changes we make should be just spelled out specifically, like, the bulk of the bylaw's kind of big, and we're sitting here defending things that have always been the case. I think it's important that we just designate, hey, here are the things that we're changing, and here's why we implemented these changes. So just, maybe just on the side, a separate document that we can go out to the public with, with our final draft and say, here it is, and this is why. And we've deliberated, we've had, you know, people give us feedback, and so, so we give them what the changes are and why. That way, we're not sitting here hatching out all the little things that have always been the law, right?
Good point.
Next one, I, I just wanted to reference what you said. The most aggressive dog I've ever encountered in Carstens was a breed everyone would accept as a friendly breed, right? It wasn't, it wasn't one you would, you would discount. And it was just common, everyday breed of dog would rip your face off. But anyway, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have filtered that one. Two, there are two ways to overcome the money grab perception, right? And I understand why we have to have the fees that are high. There is, of course, the accusation that the government is only doing it as a tax. There are two ways to overcome that. Number one, give some of that fee money to the victims, right? Reparation to the victims. I think that's huge, and that, that shows the citizens that, look, if your dog bites this person, it doesn't just go into the general Carstens fund, right? That goes to pay some of their medical bills or something.
In fact, that has happened like that through Lloyd.
Exactly, and I know we do that, I just want to make sure it's spelled out so that, so that they don't think we are getting it. And we can easily defend, hey, we don't take that money, we put it towards the victims, reparations of the victims.
It's already.
Number two, that money goes into dog structure, you know, dog park fencing, dog, you know, this and that. It goes towards to help responsible dog owners in the community. So that, that fund, that money comes in, we're not just spending it on whatever, we're spending that on, you know, maybe we're donating it to the dog pound or something.
But if it is a legal fee, it has to go towards that. Because a town encounters a fee, and a town has encountered a few times.
Well, yeah, and you're talking to collect, absolutely, absolutely. So I'm just saying, if we, if we were able to look a citizen in the eye and say, hey, some of that's going to the victim, or some of that's going to dog structure, it's not a money grab, it's just, you know, it's for specific dog things. Lastly, I want to appreciate Mr. Walsh and his letter. If it's true, if it's true that the maximum penalty imposed on someone assaulting another person, if that's $5,000, I don't think any of our dog fees should exceed, but, you know, a human being themselves would be charged biting another human being. So I think, I think our cap fees should probably be what the human fees are, and that's my last thought.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much for your positive input. I know that Jeff has taken note. We have passed a lot of time talking about this bylaw, the different issues that have been there. We are not going tonight to make a recommendation to accept the changes that are there, because some of them might need to be forthcoming. So there is no need to make any decision regarding that tonight.
I just think we also need to be aware of the, the fine structure, that we need to discuss that, there's going to be some changes. Is that what you were going to say, Councillor? But I think that we need to look at that and lower them and make them more fair.
Yeah, that is something we have already put forward.
One more thought, considering also that we need to recover legal costs, we can't, can't just give out, like Lloyd said, you have $50 fine, and then have somebody get a lawyer involved, and we have to pay $750 or $800 to defend a $50 fine, it's ridiculous. So the fine needs to suit that.
That requirement, yes. Anybody else before we move on?
I just have one, I'd like to get a clarification. If I have a fenced yard or a person has a fenced yard, and a cat comes into my yard, and my dog kills it, it's a domestic animal, he's killed.
Too bad for the cat.
Does he then become an aggressive dog?
Aggressive dog.
No, he has fulfilled his duty as a, protected of your yard, unfortunately.
Yeah, if it's in your yard, it's different than.
Jeff, maybe, maybe that, maybe that aspect should be maybe clarifying a bylaw somewhere. Because honestly, that could very well happen. And yeah, to me, I would say, too bad for the cat.
That's why you say it's a dog's breakfast.
But it could be, it could be also very sad for the cat owner. But the reality is, a minute the cat is out and goes in somebody else's yard that has a dog, the reality is that something will happen. Okay, thank you so much for all your input. We have passed an awful lot of time on that, but it's an important bylaw, and it's a bylaw that affects quite a few people in this town. Let's move on to bylaw 1629, adult materials bylaw. We have passed a.
Where are we?
We are under 6A.
Six B.
6B, sorry. So we need a motion to approve third reading of the bylaw, and then we'll need to accept the third reading. I just want to let you know that this, between first and second and this meeting today, Lloyd has brought copy of the bylaw to all those that would be concerned in the community, and no feedback, negative feedback has come back to town. The only time we had some information was from Extra Food, who wanted to have clarification on the application of that bylaw. And that was done by our bylaw officer, and no further concerns were voiced. So I feel that we're ready to approve, to have a motion to approve third reading of the bylaw. Is somebody willing to make it? Councillor Edmonds?
I'll make the motion to approve third reading of bylaw. What was the number?
1629.
1629.
Adult materials bylaw. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Now I need a motion to.
You just did it.
Oh, that's it. We're sorry. We're done with this one.
You don't have to allow.
I was, I was looking for my other notes, but no, there was none. Okay, let's go to 6C. Jeff, you were going to have discussion with the manager of the campground. Can you give us a little bit of info?
I met with Mr. Quentin and Avery today. They have no concerns with the contract as it's written. We have a few custodial things working out between us, but they're not contract related. So they're in agreement with everything you've been presenting.
Okay, Councillor Benry?
Then I make a motion that we accept the contract as written for the, for the campground contract.
Thank you very much. All in favor, sorry? Thank you. Yes.
We have some food for you downstairs, if you want to take a short recess.
Okay, Councillor, how do you feel about that?
I feel really good. I'm just wondering if it's possible for us to knock a few more things out there?
Yeah, maybe we could get a few more.
Okay. Let's try to go 7A, bylaw 1631, the municipal development plan. What we need, we need a motion to allow for first reading only prior to the open house. Yes?
I'll move first reading of bylaw 1631, the municipal development plan.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. There is an open house that will occur, can you give me the date of the open house?
Is it February 10th? Is that Tuesday?
Okay, February 10th, 6:00 PM.
Public hearing.
Okay, public hearing.
We're all expected to be there.
Yeah.
It's part of your regular.
It would be in the.
Yeah, so we'll be right there, the bylaw will be read, and then they will have a chance to say, that is a time I will have a chance to allow the gallery to give some input if I need to. Bylaw 1633 airport bylaw. All what I would want for this airport bylaw is a motion to adopt first reading only. Yes?
I'll make that motion to, to adopt first reading of bylaw 1633 as, as classes here for bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. The reason why we shouldn't proceed is because in that bylaw, we have introduced the idea of having a.
Representative.
Representative from the county. So we can't really move forward until we have that sorted out. Okay, Councillor Pivoy?
I just have a, have a question, maybe, maybe we'll answer that question, because we have a bylaw, but we also have an airport, or airport operations policy, and there is a little overlap. There was actually some duplication in.
Yes, there is, Councillor, and that is something we need to kind of deal with. And I was talking to Councillor Benry, telling him that there are a few things that probably will need to be addressed when you have your full board.
I, I, I think at this point in time, Mayor, we need to table the Carstens Airport Operations Policy until we meet as a board and have second and third reading on the, on the airport bylaw.
Okay, we could do that, but there is something I want to address, if you don't mind. It's a question of the managers and the fees. I need to have a little bit more clarification regarding managers and the fees. Right now, if I understand correctly, Doc Murray is doing the work around the airport, the paperwork and the policies and all that, and is doing that with some minimal compensation from the town by your end, a little bit like your COP people are doing. Now, what I am wondering is, are we talking salary, or are we talking honorarium? And if we're talking salary, what are we talking about? And those are elements that need to be discussed at your committee level.
We're talking in honorarium, basically is all he, he's expecting.
Okay.
And he's not even expecting that.
Okay, so is that something then, then at your, when you will have your full board, once we have the bylaw 1633 in place, can you then bring a recommendation from your committee to council regarding that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So let's table it at this point.
I just have one more question following up on that.
Sure, sure.
I noticed we have, in the fee structure, it looks like we have fees for regular users. Is there a fee to just fly inland and tie down?
No, I don't think so. I'll have to check on that.
Okay, can you maybe make a note of that, Councillor?
Yes.
Tourism.
Taxes.
Is there a fee for tying down?
I don't remember if there's a, if there's a landing, you know, a fee for, for the use of the airport or not, I, we'd have to check on that.
I don't, I don't think there is.
I don't think there is.
Okay, maybe you want to check that out, and we quote next time.
I'll move that we table this, that we table.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of tabling this item, this policy, thank you.
Tell, until.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be.
Let's put a date.
Do you know when the committee meets next, Councillor?
First Thursday.
So there's our second meeting in February? It's to be the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay, let's put it the 24th. Okay. Where did you put this? Thank you. All right, maybe we can, go ahead, sorry.
Can I just make a recommendation? I know some of these, some of these bylaws, we have the mayor and then the name.
Right.
And on some, we don't. And when you look at some of the old bylaws, unless you know who the mayors were, you can't read the signatures. So it would be very handy.
Oh, I want to have it printed.
Okay, you want to print it below? Okay, a good point. I think that is a good point, thank you.
Or just better penmanship from our mayor.
It is a signature, it's unnecessary.
All right. The bylaw 1572A, it's really a procedural bylaw. So what we need, we need first, second, allow for third, and third, to allow for Jeff to be. Uh, no, to be, for Hawkins Corian to replace Jeff Shaw, Jeff Shaw. And what about, are you covered already to replace?
Do you want me to touch on this briefly?
Could, could you make sure, I want to have it.
So under the CAO bylaw that you passed last meeting, by default, I am the designated officer for the town.
Correct, so we don't need to approve you.
So I am also a designated officer under the current bylaw in the absence of the CAO. And so until things are permanent, I've asked Hawken if he would just function in that capacity until we get everything sorted out. My intent would be to bring a whole new bylaw after the new CAO hiring is done, and if, depending on how we replace other positions, if we do, then we will deal with it and just do a new bylaw. So this is really a stopgap until we go through the process and see what our staffing is at the time. So I've asked Hawken to be a designated officer in my absence for the town.
Okay, so in other words, it's a motion to approve Hawkins Corian.
And because you're going to bring forward another bylaw when all that's sorted out, we don't need to put a, like a deadline or a kill order on this to say, until new CAO is hired?
Because I don't know the date, this will stay in effect until it's repealed by the new bylaw.
Repealed by the.
Okay. Councillor Pivoy, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to. I, I move first reading on bylaw 1572A, the designated officers' bylaw.
To allow Hawkins Corian?
Yes, as written here, to allow Hawkins Corian is, is the designated officer in the absence of the interim CAO.
In place of Jeff Shaw. All right, all in favor? Thank you, so I need a second.
I make a motion to, to approve second reading. 1572A designated officers.
Okay, and same story is to allow Hawkins Corian to be a designated officer in place of Jeff Shaw. Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
I'll move to allow third reading of bylaw 1572.
Okay.
Which has to be there.
All in. In favor? Thank you. And the third reading.
Just real quick, Mayor Council, are you in favor of the long-term reading?
Yeah. He wanted just one.
I looked up, because you were just coming down there.
Just one second, there is the rest.
All right. I, I will make a motion for a third reading for, of bylaw 1572A, designated officers' bylaw has been proposed.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go through 7E, appointment of director of emergency management. As you know, Marion was such, and Jeff was the assistant director. Did I call it assistant director?
Deputy director.
Deputy director, okay, all right. So Councillor Barnes, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion concerning bylaw 1619, that Jeff Shaw be appointed as the director of emergency management for the town of Carstens.
And Noel Smith?
And Noel Smith as the assistant deputy director of emergency management, until a new CAO is appointed, or.
I don't think.
I just want to say something about the tail end. That should all stay in place regardless of the new CAO. Your CAO does not have to be your director of emergency.
Right, we don't need that.
Again, this is just a bit of a stopgap.
That last part on the term.
Okay, so there is a motion forward, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I just think it might be good for the rest of the council, the reason that was done by resolution and not bylaws, the bylaw allows for it to be done by motion, so we didn't have to do an amendment there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for this. 7F, this is an interesting twist, policy H5, highway usage policy is now. Policy H5, Highway Usage Policy, is now obsolete in a sense that it has been incorporated into the Transportation Bylaw 1578. And therefore, we need to rescind that policy H/5, Highway Usage Policy. So, if somebody could make such a motion, it would help me. Counselor Barfus?
I'll vote, I'll move to rescind bylaw number 11. Policy.
H.
H5. Highway Usage Policy.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.